We're going to go ahead and get started with our work session, which today is on the Maryland School Assessment Results, which were released recently. We made the decision this year to hold this discussion in a work session so that we can have more discussion, we can get more interaction among the members and with the staff and really go into the results in more detail than you generally can in a business meeting type format. So I want to thank Dr. Wilcox and the staff for being willing to do that. I know board members are anxious to see what the results are, ask questions, and learn what we know. So with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, thank you. I think first I want to share with you that we'll walk through this at whatever pace you would like, we'll take questions when you want to ask them. But you should know some time ago, when we got our preliminary embargoed results, quite honestly, I was very concerned. I was very concerned for two reasons. One, I saw some of our scores slip in some areas that we had spent a great deal of time with, but also I was not aware of what had happened around the state at that time. Subsequent, we learned that scores across the state declined almost 6 percent. So we had a fairly significant drop in the state. Our drops were, quite honestly, about in that same significance range, maybe a little bit better in some areas than the state, maybe a little bit worse in some areas. So we're going to walk through that with you today, show you how we have done, but quite honestly, I want to say to you that, well, I'm concerned because I don't like the trend of going backwards. I'm also not as concerned as you might think I should be because we are in the major change of our curriculum. We are working very hard to move towards a Common Core curriculum. There are some places within the areas of mathematics and English Language Arts where the kids are not even exposed to the teaching that is then being tested on the MSAs or the HSAs. I think it is unfair to our teachers, and I think it is unfair to our students then, for the superintendent of schools to harangue them, to beat them up, to walk all of them, given the good effort that they have. That said, I'm not sure the larger community would share that. I'm hoping that those of you who are closely affiliated with these results can help us to share the word that we are a system that continues to get better, but we are a system that has some significant challenges, given our demographics, and quite honestly, given some of the reluctance of something to change, which is causing some problems. I would tell you that when you look at the data and you look at a school by school basis, one of the other things that you see is there are some schools that traditionally have not done as well as others, who did better this time than you might have thought, and on the surface, that might be a great thing. On the underside, as the superintendent, I'm looking at, are they good because they're still teaching to the old MSA? And so did their score rise or staying the same? Was that a result of the fact that they have not fully embraced the Common Core? And next year's going to be a real problem for them when we make the switch to the PARC assessments. So we have a lot of churn in the district right now, but I think it's important that we continue to talk about scores and what they mean. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Domene. But before I turn it over to Dr. Domene, I wanted to tell you, you know, when we hired Dr. Domene as the chief academic officer, I shared a lot of accolades about her and her skills. I shared that she had held numerous positions in East Baton Rouge, and most of you, I think, maybe had a little in the back of your mind, but she's at a high school right now. She was at Bel Air High School. Will that translate to the district office position? And I think most of you gave me the benefit of the doubt, but I want to share something with you that I just found out, is that Bel Air High School was a high school that was persistently troubled in the Louisiana State Assessments. Dr. Domene was sent there to turn their school around. Just last week, Dr. Domene got notice from her friends, the school leadership, or the press conference, that Bel Air was released from state control. They were out of academic danger, and then in fact, great things were happening for kids there. That's but one example of her leadership with a caring committee group of folks. So, Dr. Domene, I know you're particularly proud of it. She actually came into my room and she was like walking on the air. But it was one of those terrible things where she had such a private celebration because there's nobody there to really celebrate. So I wanted to make sure today you understood that she, right now, at least in Louisiana, is thought of as a great academic officer, and I think you'll see in a moment that why we hired her. So, Dr. Domene?
Thank you so much. Thank you. Good morning. It is my pleasure to share with you this morning the results from our MSA assessments, and there are several things on the table this morning that we would like to accomplish. In addition to sharing those most recent results with you, we want to compare those results with what has been happening historically with our children. We want to talk about some contributing factors to the results that we have, and we are very deliberately phrasing these as contributing factors because in education, as you know, it is very difficult to do a root cause analysis and say that there is a single cause for the effects that we get into the classroom because of the many variables that exist. But we would like to share some strategies that we have in mind and that we have been sharing with staff and principals to see about developing a cycle of continuous improvement. And then, of course, we will solicit your feedback as we help to refine the strategies that we think to put into place. I will say that my work here is a little bit different than my work has been in Louisiana. The great challenge here is moving from good to great. It's not simply, and some would take offense to using "simply" turnaround. It isn't simply turnaround, but it is challenging a county that is performing at pretty good levels to move to even greater levels. I think that you will see that in the data that we will share with you on this morning, and we'll take some time simply to refine what it is that we're doing and to share that with you. With that, Maureen Margovich will share with you.
The first slide here is the elementary reading results, working down by proficiency level. When you look at the column to the right, that is 2013, I do want to note, as they did at the state, that this does not include any MOB. We do not have MOB in the state anymore. So whereas previous years included MOB, numbers boost do not. These are all regular in the state. Our proficiency rate overall, so that would include the proficient and advanced scores, is 82.7 percent. The Maryland pass rate was at 86.4 percent, so we are 3.7 percentage points lower than the Maryland percent. The proficiency rate decreased 4.3 percent from 2012 to 2013, and the advanced scores decreased 2.9 percentage points from 2012 to 2013. If we look this historically, the advanced scores would be similar to that which we saw in 2007, and the basic would be similar to what we saw in 2006. The next slide is the middle level reading MSA results. The overall proficiency rate for middle school reading was 86.5. This is above the Maryland pass rate of 83.4 by 3.1 percentage points. Our proficiency rate increased 1.3 percentage points from 2012. Our advanced increased 0.9 percentage points. This is the best advanced that we've ever had since the inception of the test. We move next to elementary math. The proficiency rate for elementary math was 83.9 approximately. This is just about even with the Maryland state proficiency rate of 83.9. Our advanced did decrease, though, 10.2 percentage points, and our proficiency rate was down 4.1 percentage points from 2012. We can compare that again historically. Our advanced has moved back to 2007 rates, and our proficiency has moved back to about 2006 proficiency rates. Our middle level math, the proficiency was at 81.8 percent. This compares to the Maryland pass rate of 72.2. We are 9.6 percentage points higher than the state in middle level math. Even with this, our percentage of our proficiency rate decreased 3.1 percentage points from 2012, and our advanced fell 6.3 percentage points from 2012. We moved back just a little bit here to about 2011 for our basic and 2010 for our advanced. Did you have any questions about those four slides?
So at this point, Maureen, excuse me, developed this line to show overall the summary of student performance by objective. This is the average score for all students in each of those objectives. She has noted the proficiency rate cutoff as well as the advanced cutoff. And I think what this slide shows us is that we are pretty consistent across the board when it comes to how our students perform on this particular measure. We surpass the state's proficiency rate, and so our conversation is not about proficiency. Our conversation should be about increasing growth, student growth. This is true in both reading and math at the elementary and the middle school level. Again, we are pretty consistent. We do what we do well now, but we want to continue to increase. I wanted to look at the data just a little more deeply because those views that you just saw were annual scores. You were looking at different groups of kids at the same time every year. So the next few slides show the same groups of kids as they have progressed through the grade levels. In the green, you have the spring 13 results, and in spring 13, this group was in fifth grade. And for instance, in general reading processes, which is, you know, simply the, has to do with how we teach reading, phonemic awareness and phonics, vocabulary acquisition and so forth, those basic reading skills. Our kids are strong. They have been. They were strong in the fourth grade, I'm sorry, in the third grade, where they performed at a level that was proficient. They were strong in the fourth grade again, and even in the fifth grade. They, we, as I have said before, we are very consistent in what we do. To me, this says that we do a pretty good job of teaching our kids to read. When we look at that next objective, comprehension of information text, that's how students read and analyze and synthesize information from nonfiction texts. Again, pretty good scores, just a little bit lower than just the reading, the general reading processes, but again, our kids do very well, and they have. This, again, same cohort, they're pretty consistent. And the next objective, the comprehension of the literary text, same groups of kids, still scoring proficient, proficient, and advanced in third, fourth, and fifth grade. Here are these kids as a group of kids who were sixth graders in spring 2013. Again, you see very little dissonance, there's very little variation in the performance levels of our students. And this is even with the progressively increased rigor that's required of the standards as they move among the grade levels.
Dr. Domene, could I interrupt just a moment? I'm sorry. Trying to understand what, and I'm not saying it's a mixed message, it could just be my lack of, certainly, lack of understanding, but we've understood for several years now that our literacy, our reading, is a big issue in this county. And I guess when I look at these numbers, we're talking about advanced and proficient, and when I look at statistically an average, I'd like to know about the outliers, the tails. And I guess my concern still remains, if we're doing a pretty good job of teaching reading, why do we tend to have such a large number of basic that can't quite learn to read in a timeframe that allows them to then excel at the rest of their schooling? Can you help me understand why we have this mixed bag of effectiveness?
I think that that's what Ms. Margovich's slide showed, how we, this past year, increased in the percentage of students who scored at the basic level. And that's my cry to our county today. That's what we have to work to increase, to decrease the percentage of students who are scoring at the basic level. Why does that happen? Well, it may, there's a variety of reasons, and there is a section in the presentation where we will talk about contributing factors, but I'll tell you that we have a variety of programs and practices that are happening across the district, and I think that that has an impact on how well we can do what we do. Some very good practices are in place that I have heard from our county-level supervisors and from principals. I have not yet seen them in practice in the classroom. Of course, that will be what I will be anxious to see, but simply at first blush, I am concerned about the variety of programming and practices that we have in the district as it relates to reading. We need to be sure that we can implement with fidelity what we do. We need to be sure that we have the capacity to support very well what happens in the classroom. And at this point, I am at a disadvantage because, again, I have not seen it in the classroom yet. But again, just based on my observations at this time, I would say that that's probably a contributing factor to the variance.
And what I would just share as a follow-up, over the years serving on the board, we've often, or not often, but infrequently actually, looked at a comparison of the different programs that have been made available. And as a board member, when we were looking at budgeting or cost of the different programs, some were products that we paid for, we were told that we needed different programs for each different type of learning ability. So I look forward to some evaluation of all those programs to see if indeed we do need that type of alignment, or if there's one program that can be flexible enough for the teachers to interpret for each child, or how that would all work. So having so many programs, I think, has been an issue for a long time, so.
I think, as I understand it, and I've been learning about these, the programs that we have in place are designed to address different student needs. I just want to be sure that we are implementing them the way that they were designed, and that teachers have the support that they need to implement it very well, and that frankly, schools have the capacity to do that as well. But we've been talking about evaluation of the programs that we have in place, and that is one thing that's on the radar. Again, the rest of the slides, and I know that you have had the presentation for some time, but again, I simply want to emphasize the consistency. And it isn't just in reading. You will see that it is so in math as well. The scores are very close, again, and I will tell you, simply because the bars have been turned horizontally, it doesn't mean anything, it's just a visual cue for me to know that we're talking about math at this time, but again, same groups of students, over time, performing consistently.
Dr. Domene?
Yes?
Back to the reading for a second. If I look at the cohorts, grades three through five, four through six, and five through seven, it looks like consistently, I mean, it's very clear in the four through six cohort, the general reading processes, they seem to score the highest. The comprehension of information text is not as high, and the comprehension of literary text seems to be the lowest. Is that, is that a consistent thing nationwide on these kinds of tests? Does that tell us something about where instruction is effective and where it might not be effective? What should we make of that?
I think that tells us, that's more complex. General reading processes simply means, I'll use the scarlet letter, if we put it in the hands of a child, it's a book, and at kindergarten, they understand this is a book, there are pages, there are words, and I can get meaning from it. By the time we get to the 12th grade, we expect a student to be able to analyze the ideas in that book, to synthesize and create new ideas that's based on a text. So general reading processes is basic reading. This is, this is basic reading comprehension. I can read and I can comprehend. When we get into those standards that deal with comprehension of nonfiction and literary text, then those are those more complex cognitive skills that kids need. It's doing something with what you read. It's making something new of the ideas presented, making connections across disciplines and so forth. So those are more complex processes than just the general reading processes. So I'm not alarmed by that. What I have shared with our staff, and what has been shared with them already, is that this shows, especially when it comes to comprehension of the information text, as we move to PARC, and the Common Core standards is that we need to teach our children to cognitively manipulate the text, the nonfiction text, the nonfiction readings. They need to be comfortable in applying, in analyzing, and synthesizing those texts. So this is not a unique trend to Washington County. It's, again, the progressive rigor.
Natural part of learning to read.
Correct.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Can I dovetail just a little bit on that, Dr. Domene?
Yes.
Thank you. And that was a question that, I mean, was something that caught my eye, but this may be simplistic, and I apologize that it is, but, you know, can that also be a result of a lack of, a lack of practice, per se, using, you know, literary text or informational text? And can it be, one of the arguments that we've had as a group with staff and with other people amongst ourselves, is that we, our English textbooks have gone away from, and sometimes in our English programs in Toto, have gone away from reading entire pieces of literature into reading segments. Is it the fact that, you know, we don't have the full text and the full piece of literature where we can, you know, follow along and build a comprehension of that piece of literature? You know, is that, does that have an impact on it? Do you understand where I'm coming from? In other words, it's one thing to read a couple of chapters of a piece of, you know, work of literature. It's another thing to read the whole book and have an opportunity to follow the book as it builds its ideas, as it presents its, you know, message, whatever the case might be. Are we shortchanging our kids, and are we putting them in a position that they really have more difficulty comprehending because we're taking shortcuts? In other words, you know, we're giving them a lot of different pieces of literature, we're not giving them as many entire?
I think that's a great observation, Wayne, and one of the things I will tell you is that I think one of the benefits of the Common Core, if you will, is actually starting to work with authentic texts as opposed to the anthologies that you're describing, where somebody might read a chapter of a Twain book instead of the whole Mark Twain book.
Right.
Where somebody might read the preamble to the Constitution instead of the entire Constitution. I think that's where you're seeing Dr. Domene, and her staff, though, is getting more authentic texts. And I think this is also a consequence of kind of the dumbing down of reading instruction for kids. And by that I mean this, there is a tremendous movement in this country, an industry around providing guided reading, which means it's leveled text. They have actually taken sophisticated algorithms, and they have dumbed the language down so that you can read the same book that I might read, but in a simpler version.
Fiction or non?
Both.
Both.
Both. Example is, there are software providers today who will say, "We're going to give you a piece of nonfiction text, but we will give you the text at a 600 Lexile. We'll give it to you at an 800, and we'll give it to you at 1100." And the software is so sophisticated that it will adjust the reading that you'll see to the reading that I'll see, to the reading that Wayne will see, based on our Lexile scores. We'll come out, we'll have roughly the same idea, but you and I will have vastly different vocabulary experiences, we'll have vastly different experiences. So yes, we can talk about this, we can talk about that, we can have a great classroom discussion, but your education was much less risked than mine was. And I think when we begin to see scores like this, we're seeing a bit of a reflection of that, kind of our education practice over the last 10 to 15 years starting to have a consequence here. That's one of the reasons I'm excited about using authentic text again, because I think you will see not just our nonfiction libraries grow, but you'll see our fiction, our friction, that's a friction?
Fiction. Might be friction, depends.
But our fiction collections grow once again as well. And I think librarians across the country will actually sing hallelujah. In fact, if they won't have as many books, it'll be on a digital resource, but at least they'll have the whole text. I'm sorry for jumping in, but that's a passion of mine, quite honestly, this guided reading.
All right, thank you. Again, just to return to math, same, similar trend. Our kids, our kids in general, perform very well. And so our conversation, as I stated before, is not necessarily one of proficiency. We continue to outpace the state, so we are not competing against the state. It's really competition against ourselves. We're competing against ourselves to improve the growth of our students. And so our challenge is to move students to higher rates of proficiency. We want fewer basics, fewer actually proficients, and would like to grow that advanced performance band. That's frankly what we would like to have. And always keeping in mind that, again, while now we are, we're doing pretty well, but while this level is good, we want to be great. And so we want to avoid being comfortable where we are, and to develop a cycle of continuous improvement, and that is where we want to be sure we put processes in place to help that happen. I wanted to speak just a few minutes about factors that are impacting the growth, that may be impacting the growth. First of all, the transition to Common Core this year. Dr. Wilcox has always spoke, has already spoken to the fact that, you know, there were things that were not taught because the MSA requires it, but we were moving to the Common Core curriculum. So this misalignment that may have happened between the intended curriculum, the tested curriculum, and then the taught curriculum, frankly, may have been a cause for some gaps. And we also know that in this district, we aren't doing benchmark assessments as frequently as we have done in the past. as we have done in the past. And so, a factor may be that less formal, frequent progress monitoring that is not in place, and frankly, is difficult to do with learning a new curriculum at every level. And then, so then that leads into the third factor that I believe is impacting the growth. There's a shared learning curve, frankly. County supervisors are digging into this Common Core curriculum, trying to figure out what it is that the standards actually mean and require, and really intend for kids to know and do, as well as principals and teachers. So, there's a shared learning curve that's happening at this time. Other factors that may be impacting growth, I shared with you earlier, just in conversations with our supervisors and with our principals, I have learned that we have quite a few instructional practices that are happening in buildings. They are good practices, but they do vary from building to building. And with variation becomes a weakening of our capacity to support, to support everything that is going in, going on in every school. So, we want to work hard, to work on shoring up our implementation, to ensure the effectiveness of what is in place. We want to be sure that our teachers and our principals get the professional development to be able to monitor what is in place, and to make adjustments as necessary, so that, again, what is done is done well, and we can be sure that we get the best out of it. Another factor impacting growth in the area of, I'll call this instructional leadership. Again, we're all in a learning curve, starting at the county level. And so, as we learn and share with our principals and with our teachers, there's just, there are gaps that happen, because, again, we are all learning this together. And I believe that as we learn more and get more about Common Core and PARC, then we will see some of the gains that we're expecting to see from our kids. Here are a few next steps. And I reserve the right, as school goes on, to observe and recalibrate as necessary. So, right now, these are the next steps that I have proposed to the team. We will continue the current strategies that are in place. Again, very well selected, we have a very capable team here. And they have selected some solid research-based instructional programs and practices that are in place. So, we will continue those strategies to accelerate reading achievement. We, as supervisors, will monitor the implementation. Again, my goal is to make sure that we're doing correctly, or as designed, what has been put into place into those schools. We will continue to provide support. We will be in schools to offer support as needed to teachers and to principals. We will monitor how our students are progressing, and then we will adjust as necessary. We will adjust instruction, we will modify to make sure that students get what it is that they need. We have similar plans for the area of math. We are going to continue professional development for our teachers and our principals. We are working on continuing to build students' fact fluency. I know that our supervisor, Kara Reed, is working very closely with math teachers on developing practices that will help to do that. We will expand the use of flexible math grouping, and I deliberately chose the word "expand" because, again, from conversations with principals, flexible math grouping is used very well in some schools, not so well in others, but that is a way to respond to intervention. We want to see students not stuck in an intervention group the entire year, when we know that they've gained the skills and they're able to move on. So, we want to be sure that we expand the use of that flexible math grouping. Again, we will assess student progress and implement the use of a, there is a computer-based math acceleration program that we will use to, again, get students build on the skills that they may be weakened or have lacked, in order to accelerate them to move forward and beyond level. I have made a very deliberate effort to visit every school in our county. I have only four schools left. And in those conversations with principals that I've had, they have asked for some very specific things. They've asked for assistance in continuing to help unpack the standards. We are providing that for them, we will continue to do that. That conversation will happen not only with the principals, but then also with the teachers, lead teachers included in that. They have asked for common assessments. And that's an area that we will work on at the county level, and then also help to build capacity at the school level. Our teachers want to know, what is a good measure? What is a good question to determine whether or not the student has met the standard? And so, we're talking about ways among the supervisors that, instead of having teachers in every building replicate this work, perhaps help them with that task, help them develop assessments that we can then use to look at not only where students are in this classroom, but to be able to make that comparison among classes in a particular school, and then eventually at the county level. Again, all of this is, the work depends on how the Common Core continues to be rolled out. We want it to be aligned with PARC, or at least PARC-like. And so, this is a work in progress. Principals have asked for rubrics, they would like to see a standardized rubric to evaluate students' writing. We know that we have some schools that have a pretty high student mobility rate, and we want to know that if this teacher rates this work a four, that when they move to the next school, that we are using the same standard to say that, yes, this is indeed a four. So, we're looking to expand the use of rubrics to evaluate students' writing. And then they've also asked, principals have also asked, for content-specific knowledge for teachers and for administrators. I am very glad to report that our principals are instructional leaders. They are not just building managers. They are instructional leaders. And I hear that in their conversations, and especially at the elementary level, where our principals and teachers are generalists and have to know everything. They are asking for that content-specific knowledge, so that they can help when it comes to curriculum mapping, and they can provide specific support for that as well. For instructional leadership, our next steps, we will develop job-embedded professional development. That includes the county-level supervisors. We are all learning. That's a culture, everybody learning. We will create support systems such that our practices can be done well. We will realign resources, again, making sure that the finances are aligned, that we have the right people in the right places to get this work done. And then, communication is key. Not only communication among the county-level supervisors, but we want to be sure that communication from the county level to schools is also consistent and supportive. So, we'll make sure that those are in place. And then, finally, I thought a lot about this culture of continuous improvement, and came across this quote that is attributed to Oliver Cromwell. He, "Who stops being better stops being good." We have to continue to improve what we do, so that we can see increased learning outcomes for students. That's my goal in coming to the district. I simply want to be a support, and be sure that I help us get there.
So, thank you, Dr. Domain. I think, you know, the board is going to have some questions or some comments that they'll want to offer. I simply would say to you that, at the end of the second year of my tenure here, our performance has remained relatively stable. We have seen some uptick in a few areas, but I'm not sure that it is a trend, rather, it may be an anomaly right now. And that's probably true in both directions. You know, I was reminded one time in a previous job where somebody said, "Well, a year doesn't make a trend." So, I think we're fast-building kind of that base of knowledge, that we're going to be able to make some comments like that, but right now, I'm not sure we can. I can tell you this, that when you track us relative to other counties, we have not lost ground significantly, and in fact, in many places, we have gained some ground. But what I also have to say to you is, you know, as candidly as I can, is I'm not sure it's because of the general decline in the state, or because we've actually stabilized. We have not been able to do that analysis yet. I'm confident that we are hiring great people to teach our young people. I've looked almost at every hire this year that has been made in the system. We're hiring people from good colleges and universities who appear to be academically But we have, I think, a significant amount to work to do. It's important for you not to lose sight of one of the things that Dr. Domain said, in that our principals are asking for better, deeper content knowledge. We also have teachers who are asking. It's the first time in my career that I have heard teachers say fairly consistently that they don't want pedagogy, meaning teaching about teaching, they want the content knowledge that goes under it, because I think they're beginning to understand that the curriculum is changing, going from being a generalist across a whole bunch of things, to knowing some things very well. So, I think there's a fundamental shift. But that fundamental shift is also creating a bit of unease within the district. You've got teachers who are saying, "My job is changing around me, you're going to evaluate me differently, and I'm teaching a whole different thing." So, we're going to do our best to manage all of this, but more importantly, we're going to continue to try to send positive messages to people who are rolling up their sleeves and getting the work done. So, you know, I would let you ask any questions of Dr. Domain and her team. I noticed that the math specialist is here, as so is the English specialist, who probably feel weird that their whole discipline is been talked about without them getting to say anything. So, if you guys want to join us at the table now, and we'll have whatever conversation the board would like to have. Dr. Domain, if you will, you know, kind of field the questions and pass them on to your team as you see fit.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Harshman?
I was wondering about two things. One is, I noticed that it said, "Computer," there would be computer support and so on. Are we working to have that available, so that it's not a, "Well, I need it today, and you can have it tomorrow," and so on? Because I did a lot of sharing of computers, computer labs, and the library when I was teaching, and it was not an easy task. It became a monumental problem to get research papers and so on completed when you had no materials with which to do it. That's the first question. Are we working toward a solution to that?
Well, I will tell you, in the conversations that I've had with principals, I haven't had any who has requested another computer lab. They have worked out ways, especially at the elementary school, they've done that very well, that there are computer labs that they have in place. They are making it work, they have determined schedules for how classes rotate in and out of the library. And that is not a concern that I've heard from them. I don't know if anyone else on the team has.
We'll put to that end, we've added over, I think, 500 PC desktop, excuse me, laptops at middle schools and high schools this summer alone, 500 notebook computers. We're trying to address that need of access at the schools, not for any specific subject area, but I know we spend a significant amount of end-of-year money to upgrade at the high schools and middle schools, particularly those that have not had access to technology in the past.
And I just wanted to let you know, in preparation for PARC, my department is doing an inventory of all of the computers that would be able to be used for online testing. So, we're working with technology to make sure that everybody's prepared. So, we're going to be doing that this month, to get that information from the principals.
And are we making sure that the tests will not overlap with AP and everything else that needs all the same equipment at exactly the same time?
Yes, we're working to make sure that the testing calendars aren't overlapping.
Okay, and the other question I had was, with more stringent knowledge needed by elementary teachers for specific areas, are we moving toward a departmentalized elementary? Is that-
There are some elementary schools, some principals that I've talked to, and they are departmentalized at the upper levels, fourth and fifth grade specifically. But that is not a trend across the district.
If I can add to that, you know, it's, it is difficult as an elementary teacher to be a generalist, but it's also really important that you have a grasp for all the contents, because it's really important to be able to make those connections for students. For example, in math, how can we make those connections between what we learned in math to what we're doing in science? So, there are advantages and disadvantages to departmentalizing and to being a generalist. So, it's our job to, how do we, how do we build that content knowledge for our teachers, and then support them in making those connections? And then I also wanted to go back to your question about computers. Was that based on that computer, that math bullet?
Yes, yes.
Okay. To go back to that, that was kind of a partnership with our special ed team and the math team, as far as looking at that computer-based program. And as part of that, special ed, in addition to the computers, PCs, and laptops that have been purchased, special ed has also purchased some particu-, specifically to be used for that purpose. So, there isn't that scheduling issue with computer labs in schools.
Okay, it was based on seeing it there, but it really was based on knowing that there's always a problem with every department needing computers and access to materials. Okay, thank you very much.
Ms. Harshman, and I'll come to you, Ms. Fisher. Ms. Harshman, yeah.
Williams.
That's Mrs. Williams.
I'm sorry.
I miss Ms. Harshman.
Mrs. Wilkins, and then Mrs. Fisher.
You confused me.
I understand why.
My question is, is this the only MSA information that we will be receiving as a board? Is this, this presentation, is it?
There are others.
I guess what I was hoping for was some more disaggregated data in terms of information by school. I want to know, Mrs. Brightman expressed a concern about those students who are in the pink part of the bar, who are at basic. And, you know, I want to give a face to those students, I want to know where they are. Are those students in our city schools? Are they in our county schools? Are they dispersed evenly across our district in terms of subgroup? You know, who are these kids that are consistently in this basic range, that we're not able to move into proficiency or into advanced? So, my question, I guess, is, is this it? This is all we're going to do with MSA, or will there be more disaggregated data coming our way?
I think we can provide, I think we can provide some summary information. I'd be hesitant to provide simply in a spreadsheet, but we can provide some summaries. I mean, you provide them exactly, your summaries are made. I didn't mean to share with the board.
Okay. Dr. Wilcox, I don't think your mic's on.
It doesn't work anymore.
Oh.
I don't think it works anymore.
The red light is on.
Well, it flashes. And this one doesn't work.
So, there's the possibility?
I didn't turn it off, it's on. Hello, hello.
So, there's the possibility for more information coming our way?
Yeah, we'll send some more. But it's just recasting what you've seen, so we'll send it.
My other question then deals with the principals' requests. I was just wondering how those would be prioritized, or have they been prioritized? Are they in priority here? And then, you know, how are they going to be addressed? Simultaneously, you know?
Simultaneously.
Okay.
Everything has to be done yesterday.
And with a sense of urgency, right? And with a sense of urgency, right?
Absolutely, absolutely. But actually, the work, this is work that has already begun, so this isn't starting from scratch. I guess this is confirmation for the work that this team has already done. They have been working with teams even over the summer to unpack the standards. I mean, literally looking at the nouns and the verbs and the standards to figure out what they mean. So, again, this is work that has already begun. We will continue with, and all of this is priority.
Thank you.
Ms. Fisher?
My question's going to follow up Ms. Harshman's. Going back to computer use within the schools, can the, do we know if the Park tests, if we can take them on tablets, or does it have to be a full-fledged computer?
iPads have been enabled already. They're working on Android devices as well.
Have we, I know we've put iPads in elementary schools. Do we have iPads in any of the high schools or middle schools? Because that would be a cheaper way to add more capacity of computer.
Well, right now, we just have to offer a lot of different things. Honestly, the laptop price that we're getting right now is about $600. A new iPad is about $600, when you add Air Watch and all the things that you have to add to it. So, we're adding kind of a healthy mix, but we also don't want to be dependent on any one technology. But yes, you see iPads at high schools, you see iPads at middle schools. You see a lot of the Lenovo notebook computers now that are being distributed as well.
And my other question goes back to that last item under the math box on page 13, with the implementation, the use of computer-based math. Are they programs that we presently own, or is this something that we're looking to purchase?
It has been purchased.
It has been purchased. The software. Thank you.
Just a couple-
Ms. Brightman, go ahead.
Sure. I know there's always a temptation to get down in the weeds, and I'm a non-educator, so be patient with me, but, and I promise not to do too many of those before I ask a couple of board-level questions. On your factors impacting growth page, and I don't have a page number write-off on my hard copy, but you mentioned variation among instructional practices as, and if I'm understanding, as a cause, possible cause of lack of growth, or some confusion. My understanding of Common Core rigor is that teachers would be given some flexibility as to how they delivered the material or instruction, that they were going to be given that opportunity to adjust the content to a student, or group of students, or the class. So, I'm sort of seeing variation maybe as a good thing, rather than a negative. So, I want to be sure in my mind that the Common Core isn't going to restrict the teachers, and so I'd like some response to that concern.
You are correct. There are, teachers do have the flexibility, and what is happening in some of our schools that I've seen is, for example, curriculum mapping, where units of instruction are sequenced according to that particular school. And so, in one school, you may see a particular sequence of units, but that may not be what you see when you go to the next school, the school that's down the street. And it's due to the flexibility that teachers are given. It's probably due to the recursive nature of what's being taught, as well, the standards. The, you don't cover a standard, and then move to the next standard, and we're completely done. So, there is flexibility in content, and, you know, when and how things are taught, which is a good thing for a teacher. However, at the county level, such as myself, being new, coming in, trying to figure out what's happening where, it's hard to really grasp what is happening everywhere when so many different things are happening in places. And so, it's having to have a team that has to know everything, and know when units of instruction are happening in places, so that we can adequately resource them. Science examples, Sandy's in the room, there may be a school that decides to do a unit on dissection that may happen within the first nine weeks, and another school that has it in the third nine weeks, and we've provided resources for that to happen in the second nine weeks. So, there are just some logistical things that happen at the county level in resourcing and providing support that happens as a result of the flexibility that is given.
So, there are a couple of other things, too. You know, one of the topics that we talked about is programs that are purchased in the district. I don't think teachers have a flexibility, once a program is purchased, to pick and choose how they use the program. For example, I used to work for a company that sold a billion dollars' worth of a program that was researched, designed, and developed to improve reading comprehension. But it came with all the resources that were needed to deliver that in a scientifically managed way. And if you did it that way, I will tell you, you got results. And typically, the results you had were better than what were advertised, because that was kind of the secret sauce in the marketing. On the flip side of that, there were districts all around the country who said, "Well, you know what? I don't need to use the reading portion of that program. I'm going to let kids read the newspaper during that time for their current events class." Or, "I'm not going to have the small group instruction where I actually am teaching reading." And they exercised a degree of flexibility that meant that we had no fidelity of implementation of the model. So, we got no results. In fact, in some of the studies that we did, we were actually worse off for having used the model than we just had a traditional classroom teacher. So, we have to take a look at flexibility in terms of model adoption differently than we do in terms of course development. Let me kind of walk that a little bit through, through a little bit further. It's very important to me that when we teach Algebra I Common Core Edition, that by the end of the year, I can say that the student has mastered these concepts. I don't really care that they mastered Concept 1 before Concept 3, or Concept 4 before Concept 5, although in math, there is a bit of a hierarchy that you kind of have to, right? But I'm just saying, I don't really care. If a teacher can teach it that way, and kids can learn it, then I'm all for it. But if you can't do it, because it defies logic, then no, you don't get that flexibility. Another reason for us to have a curriculum that is roughly headed west is because we have a mobility issue in this community. Kids move between and among our schools. If kids move, and teachers have so much flexibility, that we create holes for the kids in terms of their knowledge base, we haven't done them a great service. But I will tell you that the conversation that Dr. Domain and I have had repeatedly is, we cannot be so prescriptive that we suck the life out of teaching. There has to be artistry in how the teacher teaches. For example, there are many great novels that an English teacher can use to teach a perspective that is called upon in demonstrating success on a test. You know, we don't have to say that it is this classic or this classic. The teacher ought to make that decision based on the kids. That's why Dr. Domain is saying, we've got to be able to resource that. So, again, it helps to know, because I can't buy a classic collection of books for every kid in the system, but I can move them around.
To follow up, and great answer, it helps me understand that sensitive balance, but isn't the evaluation and the assessments, don't those act as a barrier to that flexibility and creativity? Don't they tend to put that burden? Where is a teacher going to be willing to take a risk, to ask the children to take a risk, to have that type of creative exchange and synergy in the classroom if this thing is hanging? I'm just, that's where I'm concerned.
I think, I think the, I think the direct answer is yes. I mean, how experimental are you going to be if you know that your job depends on it? So, but I will tell you that we have repeatedly said, I think Mike Marco and others who have been with me have heard me say 100 times to our administrators, that our assessment systems are not "I gotchas." We are not going to go into a classroom time after time and say, "You're ineffective as a teacher, because I didn't see all 144 of these behavior traits, these process traits in your class today." We're going to use these models as coaching models. We're going to work hard to help make teachers better teachers. Again, I understand, until we do that, it's just words coming from the superintendent, or words coming from a principal. But we really have little choice to have an assessment system. I mean, state law says that we have to evaluate teachers. Did our old model work? I would say there were probably as many complaints about our old model, as I've already heard about our new model. I just think that this whole assessment of classroom teachers is a very, very difficult topic for all of us. And ultimately, it's not my words to your ears, it's what happens in 46 different schools by about 100 different administrators with 1,700 teachers. And I will tell you, I cannot design a system that will satisfy a teacher who gets a bad evaluation from a teacher, from a principal, because they're going to say there was personality in it, or that the metrics were flawed. I can't, we can't design a single system. So, what we've tried to do in this process is design a system that has some balance and fairness, but I will tell you, we may have over-engineered, but we only know that until, once we get there. You know, my wife just gained her certification of teaching, and this will be my last comment on this. She has, she had been a classroom teacher for 20 years, and when we last moved, well, in Florida, she decided to be a stay-at-home mom. And I teased her about getting her certificate renewed in Florida, and I teased her even more when she got her certificate renewed in New Jersey, and I laughed at her when she applied to get it in Maryland, because I said, "Why would you want to do this?" Now, think about that for a superintendent of schools to his wife. And I did that because what I shared with her is, the world of teaching is so different today than it was not 10 years ago, not five years ago, but for our teachers last year. Now, Julie has gotten her certification, and she wants to teach again, and I told her, "Good luck in Frederick, I heard they're hiring." But, you know, my point is simply this, a real tough conversation, and not about, "I don't value education," I absolutely do. But is that what you want to make your living, given this very difficult assessment system, this accountability system, that really acts, I think, down to your point, as a damper on some teachers who want to be experimental? But I'm saying to you, once again, for the thousandth time, that is not the way we want this assessment system to be used. We're going to do our best to make sure that it isn't, but I will bet dollars to dimes, or dimes to dollars, however the phrase works best, that each of you, within the next six months, will have a teacher come and say that we had a system designed to penalize them. And you'll come back to me and say, "I told you so." Wayne tells me that nearly every day, today. And we haven't even done it once yet, so.
I'll take you back on what Dr. Wilcox said about the changing world for teachers in education, and we had a conversation not long ago. There are 25 superintendents in the state of Maryland, including the state superintendent. Dr. Wilcox is the fourth-longest tenure. Now, think about that turnover, and how the changes in the state are having a churn, not just for teachers and principals, but for the leadership of the state in education. So, I just wanted to add that.
It's never been harder, I'll tell you that.
It is interesting, when State law was written, you know, as far as the evaluations is concerned, our biggest concern was the percentage that was going to be used from assessments. That doesn't bother me nearly as much as the other stuff, because, you know, Dr. Me, you'll probably hear me say this to you 100 times, as I've already said it to him. The second part of that still worries me, because we've been told by the state that you will use one model of teaching. I've heard from HR in our last HR meeting, "We have videos out there going to show what exceptional teachers are." Well, what those videos will show, what are exceptional teachers using, the Charlotte Danielson model? You know, and I don't think the law said that. You know, the law said, the law was talking about assessments, teachers being evaluated based on student performance. Didn't say a thing about, you know, one model being used for classrooms. So, when you say flexibility, I can understand the when, the how, I don't see, that still worries me, because I don't know that teachers are going to feel the flexibility to do different things, just as everybody has said. Donna said, Justin has said, I don't think they're going to feel that comfort, to try something that might be outside of, you know, what Charlotte Danielson has prescribed as, you know, great teaching, great teaching model. So, I just look forward to hearing this all year.
Mr. Bailey wanted to get in.
I'm sorry. Paul. Just wanted to comment that I was pleased to hear the superintendent say that the hundred-so new faces coming in, he feels pretty comfortable with them, or at least in the interview processes, gained a feeling that they're prepared for what they're going to face. My question, I guess, is, is that indicative of our teacher-training institutions within the state or around the country? Are they preparing candidates for teaching to be prepared for teaching a Common Core curriculum? My experience, when I came out, I was not prepared.
I think it's fair to say that teachers aren't prepared to teach the Common Core, because what a lot of folks, I think, struggle with is, they say the Common Core curriculum, and they think that there's this book where the curriculum is. The fact is, Common Core is a set of standards, and the curriculum is defined by teachers at local school districts. So, to be direct to your answer, Mr. Bailey, is, no, they're not. But what I am seeing today from colleges of education are kids who have more expertise in a specific subject area than they've had in, say, the past 10 or 15 years. There are fewer pedagogy classes at the college level, more content level. So, when we hire an elementary teacher, they have an additional math or science course, or if we hire a science course, they have an additional English course to complement their subject area discipline. So, we're seeing some of that.
Okay. In wrapping up my comments, I would like to make the people in this room who are involved with this every day feel a little better, because in my experiences, I came through what was called a common, not a common, but the core curriculum area. I was exposed to that. Then I had Project Basic. Then I had Back to the Basics. And then I had the Admiral Rickover Report. And we survived all of those, and we will survive this. And my prediction is that we will compete well against our counties in the state of Maryland and across the United States. I absolutely feel very confident in that. My comments.
Ms. Fisher?
I absolutely agree with the mobility problem that occurs in this county, and I realize in English, for instance, we can share sets of Scarlet Letter between schools, so you can be teaching it during a different time. But I cannot imagine every 11th-grade English class teaching the research paper at the same time in this county. There are not enough libraries for that to work.
You don't have a library.
No, no, because the kids take anything they can find on that and accept it as fact and truth, without checking into it.
That's part of our job, though, isn't it? Teach them that they've got to be sophisticated.
I think that's a task that hasn't, the teachers aren't doing.
We have not.
They don't have time, I don't think.
You're right.
To teach them how to find authentic material on that internet.
I think that's a very good point. And that's one of the challenges we're finding today in curriculum, is that the- And that's one of the challenges we're finding today in curriculum is that the vetting of resources, whether they be traditional paper resources or electronic resources, is becoming a greater and greater challenge for our teachers. Dr. Domain and I actually have a conversation about this, and one of the things that we talk about is, what does a supervisor's role look like in the future? My sense is, the supervisor's role is going to look very different in the future because they are going to become the curators of great resources for teachers who are so busy with kids that they don't have time to find these things. So, you know, you can look at Beth and Kira today and say, "Gosh, you are probably the last of a generation of folks who are masters of multiple trades." Sooner or later, they will be like research librarians providing materials to people in the schools through portals that they maintain and wikis that they leave. Oh, you do some of that already.
That's also why I have a problem, what I said before, with other disciplines, the high school level teaching, requiring a research paper, because they don't teach the process of doing the research paper, and kids will get it done any way they can, say for a science teacher or a history teacher, and they're learning bad habits of how to do research. Because those other teachers don't have the time to teach how to authenticate what you're using as a resource, nor do they have the time to check into it when they grade the paper, see what's done.
Mrs. Williams, I got it right this time.
You did, thank you. We've talked a lot about the summative assessments, the one that we're going to be saying goodbye to soon, and the one that's right there on the horizon, it's big and scary for us. I guess I'm wondering, I myself see, if I were in the classroom and had the flexibility to integrate and do everything that I needed to do to teach the Common Core, I'm thinking in terms of formative assessments, how difficult that must be because, because of the flexibility, because of the need to integrate and the fact that the teachers are going to be doing that differently. So I guess my question then becomes, what are we doing to monitor the progress? What can we do in lieu of benchmarks that we've used to help us monitor our progress towards MSA? What's, what's in store for our teachers now in terms of formative assessment?
I'm smiling because we've been having.
That discussion.
That discussion.
So that's another airplane that's in the works?
I'm looking for the plane. We are, actually, I believe that Beth and E.L.A. and Kira, I believe, also has, they've been working on building good questions, assessment items that cross disciplines. But again, that's, that's the challenge. As you said, that's the challenge of the flexibility. We would like to have that available for teachers. Teachers right now, according to principals, are doing that at the school level.
By grade level? They're doing that by grade?
Yes, yes. Again, according to principals. I haven't seen it yet. I know that the two of you have been in schools and may have seen some of this work. But that's some of what we are trying to calibrate at this level. One, I don't want teachers to have to do that. It seems duplication of effort. So if there's something that we can do to make them, you know, to help them spend their time more efficiently, then we'd like to do that. But that's ongoing conversation with us, it's.
Well, I think the other thing, the other thing that we're using right now is that we're using the Descartes, which is produced by the MAP assessments, which we're giving three times a year. So that's helping us to kind of look at what a student needs and then individualize their education. It's giving teachers, I think, that understanding of where kids are. The real question for us is, what do we do at the high school level right now? Because we don't have anything that's similar at the high school level. So I think there probably will be some through-course progress monitoring devices that they come up with, but I will tell you, I will resist with every fiber of my bones, within my bones, the Return to the Past, which is the quarterly or every six-week benchmark assessment that any teacher will likely teach to, which narrows our curriculum and I think stifles creativity in a way that is really counterproductive for kids. So I know that they're working on some great cross-discipline assessments. That's really, I think, the wave of the future. And then the question really becomes, how frequently do they administer it? How quickly do they give results back? And what does it mean for kids in terms of changed instruction? So that's kind of the push that I will give them when I get to sit down.
You used a phrase that I was going to use as we got towards wrapping this up. The factors impacting growth and the discussion about what's being tested and what's being taught and the change in curriculum. I know I got that on back-to-school night with my son last year when it was, "Look, you're in seventh grade math, next year you're going to have to take Common Core algebra, so the curriculum you're going to get this year is going to be different." And it was tough for parents to understand, let alone parents who aren't on the board. But they were very clear about that. And one of the things that I think the results show for anybody who I think wants to think about it is that in this county, we don't teach to a test. Because if we taught to a test, my son wouldn't have had that experience. Those teachers would have been there saying, "This is the test you're going to have in the spring? This is what I'm going to test you in this classroom." And I want to thank, frankly, the superintendent, the supervisors, the principals, and the leaders for having the courage to do that because it's right by kids, knowing that we might be sitting here with MSA scores that are lower than they were the year before. But I think it's precisely because there was a conscious choice made in this county to move forward with what we're going to have to do for the long run, rather than teach to a test in the short run so that we can put our scores where we might think they ought to be. And finally, to bring this back, I mean, as we all talk about it on the global level as schools, or as a system, I'm sure these results are being discussed at the school level by principals, by the supervisors. What advice would you give Dr. Domain to a parent who now sees an MSA test where their child looks like they've fallen back? What would you tell that parent or those students? Because there are going to be a lot of parents, if they haven't already found the results on Performance Matters, who are going to go back for the first day of school, get the MSA results from last year and say, "Wow, my child was advanced in both subjects last year, and now they're only proficient." What advice would you give that, that parent?
I would remind the parent that we are in a period of transition when it comes to what is being taught and what is being tested. That while we want our students to, and parents to be aware of where students are performing on measures that they are given, that that is only one measure that is not currently aligned to what we are doing. It is not currently aligned to the curriculum. That they should monitor what students are doing in class. They should talk to their children about what they are learning. That they should be sure that they are abreast of how students are performing in that class on assignments and with the grades that they earn at the end of each marking period, and have constant communication with the teacher. Then the next measure that comes out should be more reflective of what their student, their child has learned.
And that's, that's sort of the advice I gave to one parent, which is, none of these assessments is going to necessarily tell you as much about your child as a good conversation with the principal, a teacher, and the people who work with your child every day. So if you think that any child's success is reduced to a number on a test, that's shortchanging the student, and it's also shortchanging the instructors who spend their time getting to know and teach, teach that child. So I think you're exactly right. Mrs. Harsman will take one or two more questions before we move to our next subject.
I just have one thing I wanted to clear up, and that was, will we then receive, as Mrs. Williams requested, a school-by-school listing of the?
No. You can get that at the Maryland website if you would like to pull that out, MSDE. I'll send you a summary of it. I think, and I sound like, no, I won't give you, I can print it for you if you want, but it would be much easier for you to have it. So I'll send you the link so that you can go get it. I'll send you the link.
That'll be fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are there any other quick questions on this topic?
This is hopefully quick. Also, on the instructional leadership, Dr. Domain, you spoke about realigning resources from a board level that flags that as a budget discussion. Will there be something, are we realigning the same amount of money? Will we need additional money? Is it going to be redeployed? What kind of recommendations might be coming from instruction and curriculum to the board and superintendent level as a recommendation?
I'll take a first pass, and then Dr. Domain, if you want to. To the extent that we would ask for additional resources, that would come before the board. If we were going to purchase something in excess of $50,000, that would come to the board. If it is simply reallocating resources from one fund to another, you probably wouldn't see that because that should be a budget adjustment that we had made.
That's correct. I'm not asking for additional funds.
That's where I was wondering if we needed to anticipate that discussion going forward. Thank you.
Well, unless there are any more questions or comments, I'd like to thank Dr. Wilcox for arranging to have this presentation for all of us, and thank the board members for a good discussion.
And you're always welcome, excuse me, Justin, to stop up either, whether you're on the curriculum committee or not, if you want to visit with Dr. Domain about these results, please don't hesitate. Rick and Matt are also great resources if you want to talk about specific school performance so you know what's happening there. But I would encourage you to begin with Dr. Domain, and then she'll bring Rick and Matt into the conversation.
We're next going to have a brief discussion on mission vision. Do you mind taking 10, 10 minutes? We need to wrap the next discussion up by 11:30, so that'll still give us almost a half hour. So we'll come back in 10 minutes.
Okay, sounds good.